Thank you. I could say. All of them all hidden.
Okay, is everybody ready? Jackie's still running some copies, so when she gets that, we'll hand those out and get talking about that. But I figured we'd get started with some of the other business, the election of officers and all of that, while we wait for Jackie to finish up some of that stuff. So we will, I'm not a member, but because we have an all-new board, you know, no officers or anything like that, I'll call the meeting to order at 5:07 for you. And then for the members, how about we just go around and just say your names, since everybody's new here, to get to know everybody at the same time that we're we're taking home. So Sarah here with you, Dave.
Kristin Bries.
Marsha Peterson.
Mark Jacobyak.
Laura Anderson.
Chad Impelozzari.
Okay, that's a quorum. All of the members we currently have appointed for the Zoning Board of Appeals, including our alternates. So, and I can give you the details on which ones are the alternates, Veronica. So the first thing we need to do so that we can deal with business here is election of officers. So the bylaws say that at the, on the second Wednesday of November, you will elect officers as a board. The bylaws also allow the Zoning Board of Appeals to vary that the bylaws based on a resolution. So what I would ask for is, since we don't have any officers, is for someone to make a motion to elect officers at tonight's meeting so that we can function as a zoning boards of appeals.
Make a motion that we elect the officers. I actually, I would nominate for chairperson on this.
We want a second.
Let's do the second on that.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? If the motion carries, we will open it up for nominations then for chairperson.
I would like to nominate Laura Anderson for chair.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. Looks like the job is yours if you don't object.
I'll accept the nomination. Do we need a second, though?
Yes.
I will second.
Second, though? Okay. And then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So I'll turn the meeting over to Laura at this time.
Okay, so the next office to fill is vice chairman, and I would ask for a nomination or a volunteer to be nominated.
So the vice chair runs the meeting when the chair is not available. You know, which happens on occasion, but usually we like to keep it so the vice chair doesn't have to be too active.
I would like to nominate Laura.
I would decline. Thank you, though.
Persuade you?
You can persuade me.
All right, I nominate Chad.
Just bumping his head.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, 5-0. Okay, secretary. Do we have a nomination for secretary? I nominate Marsha. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have our officers. So we can move on to public comments. Is there any public comments? Guess not. Any conflicts of interest of the agenda items?
This will, just because we're kind of in a training, first-time meeting, this will be on your agenda for conflicts of interest. So if we have a case later on on the agenda that, and I'll go over what are conflicts of interest when we're doing our training a little bit later, this is where you would either make state that you have a conflict, or if you have a perceived conflict, say you used to work with somebody, that's the applicant, but you don't talk to, you know, you're not involved with them in any way. If you wanted to disclose that I used to work with them, don't have a conflict, you know, I can be impartial to this. You're welcome to just mention that at that time. I usually try to err on the side of, you know, more information, just because people may know that you used to work with that person, and they don't know what your relation is anymore with them, and it'd be better to just do that upfront than have somebody accuse you later on of some sort of impropriety, or you know, something like that. So, and if you ever think that you may have a conflict, or you're not sure, feel free to call me in the office, and I can talk with you about that and get advice from the attorney if necessary.
Thank you. Next item, approval of the agenda. Any discussion?
I'd move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved? Okay, the, I think you all have a copy now of the October 13th minutes. It was a brief meeting. The only thing I found on there under item seven suggests calling officer first. I think you meant to say officer. Item seven.
And if you need a minute to review these, I don't know that you've seen them before, so go ahead and take a minute, take a look at them. Usually they'd be in your packet, and you'd have them before the meeting to be able to review.
Marsha? Are you ready?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, are there any other corrections or changes to the minutes? All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I would motion to approve the minutes from the October 13, 2021, meeting with the one correction that was made to paragraph seven. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved? The next item. Sarah, do you want to talk about the dates for the ZBA meeting, or your availability, because you're kind of an integral part into this process?
Yeah, so typically, the Zoning Board of Appeals meets on the second Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM. And that's within the bylaws. We are setting the calendar starting in January, which is kind of, you know, a little early, but that's okay. I was going to see if we would be able to move the ZBA meeting to maybe the third Wednesday instead of the second Wednesday, only because I have a standing meeting that conflicts. It's, my meeting starts at 5:00. So far, it's been on Zoom, so it makes it a little, little bit easier, even though I haven't been able to attend some of the old meetings, but when we go back to in-person meetings, I'm not sure I'll be able to make it to seven o'clock here. If it is something where we, we can't reach a date that works, then we'll just keep it on this day, and we'll make it work some way between Jackie and I, or with my other meeting. So, but if the, the ZBA would entertain it, I don't know if the third Wednesday would work for all of the members.
And we don't have any other conflicts with the room?
No, for the third. I checked the calendar.
Are you talking for the one month, or you're talking for all the months?
For all the months. So then we would, we would amend the bylaws to reflect that our regular meetings would be on the third Wednesday.
I don't have a problem with that.
Does anybody have?
Nope.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear?
Yep, everybody seems to be good with that. So we would just need a motion to schedule our 2022 meetings, regular meetings, for the third Wednesday at 7:00 PM.
I'll make that motion. Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for moving that.
Motion carried. Any communications received?
I have not received any communication.
I've not received any in the office yet.
Okay. Then Sarah, back to you with the training.
Yes. So I guess I probably should have introduced myself at the beginning. I'm Sarah, Co-Previa. I'm the zoning administrator and planner for the township. I work with Jackie. Jackie's in the office most, most days. It is a part-time position, but she's usually in checking voicemails and emails and dealing in land use permits. So we kind of work together on that, and we are always available for any questions that you have. I know at the beginning here, you're getting your feet wet. And anything, when you're looking at these cases and reading staff reports, looking at applications, feel free to call and chat with us about it, get a better understanding. We'd also encourage you to go out to the site. That's where these name badges are for, so when you're out there, you can identify yourself, should somebody be around. But to go out to the site and get a lay of the land. You know, you can look at the plans, you can look at the drawings, but until you go out there to really see it, I know for next week's application, he has stakes out there that show where the building sits, where the property lines are, to give you a perspective of what's happening. And that's what we're looking for all of our applicants really to do, is to, to mark out the boundary line, if it's a, if it's a variance request of what's the closest, and then where they want to build or do something, so you can get a good idea when you're out there on the site, what it looks like. The last Zoning Board of Appeals put into an amendment that's before the Planning Commission to require a state survey. So some of the issue, and you'll see until that becomes effective, is how people mark their line, and if it's actually an accurate representation of where that property line is. So requiring that survey, while it does take a little bit more, you know, money and effort on the applicant, it's, it is vital, because we don't know where our property lines are until somebody stakes them out publicly where they are, even if, you know, you need to.
This is Jackie. Can you have a time for that? And then this is kind of a little PowerPoint that I put together to help with some of the plans. I would still have more to come from Jackie.
And as I mentioned, we have binders over there with zoning ordinances on that, on that tray. You can take your ordinance home. You need to bring it, though, every meeting, or leave it on the cart, so it's available for you. We like to have one here, so if you want to take one home and keep it at home, we can make another copy to put on the cart there. We just need to know that, so that we have it available for you. In that binder has your zoning ordinance, it has your bylaws for you, and yours will not have the master plan in it, but the Planning Commission has the master plan in it as well. So we'll get started in the Zoning Board of Appeals, in the handout I gave you. I'm kind of doing it from a very basic level, so if you've been around for a little while, you may be a little bored with it. You may already know. But some of it will be a nice refresher, but for anybody that's new, and if you have any questions as I'm going through it, please just ask. I've been doing planning and zoning for many, many years. I've been the zoning administrator at various places, so got a lot of background.
That's who you're going to be covering the rest of this?
Yes. So roles and responsibilities. There's multiple boards that are involved at the township level. These are just three of them. We also have a parks committee, and there's a couple other committees and groups that are out there, but we've got the Planning Commission. You know, they're dealing in drafting the zoning ordinances, the master plans, they're reviewing site plans and special use permits for projects and applicants. We have the Township Board, the legislative body that's elected. You know, they're doing budgeting, they're setting policy for the township. And then we have the Zoning Board of Appeals here, and you're doing variances and appeals and interpretations. And you're this quasi-judicial board. You're really acting as an appeals board. From typically, it's a decision that I've made, or you know, something else like that, or something that we need a decision on, very much more judicial than the Planning Commission or the Township Board. So the next page, we have the rules and procedures. These are the rules of your board. These are also what I refer to as bylaws. They are, do you say rules and procedures at the top of the copy that you have? There's five regular members, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and two alternates. So hopefully you know which one you are, for what you need to serve for, because we'll include everyone on the same communication, so everybody's in the loop with what's happening for packets and all of that information. But we just have the five that'll sit and make the decision. And then the alternates, when called to serve, serve in the same capacity as a regular member. They're, you know, they get to vote, they get to act, they get to do everything, just like a regular member, and if the case gets carried over to the next meeting, they also sit on the meeting at that time. So you may have to be available for a couple of meetings as the alternate. We have the three officers, which we already went through for this. We've got the chair, vice chair, and secretary. The chair is the big one. They run the meeting. You have to listen to them. Set the rules and kind of policy. And then you have the staff for the Zoning Board of Appeals. You have the recordings secretary, Veronica. She'll be over there drafting the minutes for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Get, we'll get those out to you, like I said, in your packet, and you'll probably see them actually before that. But, you know, she'll make all the changes to the minutes, and if you find that there's something that really bothers you about the minutes, or you'd like to change or something like that, feel free to bring it up. You know, Veronica, she's, she's working for you. I mean, we both work for you, but we want to make you happy. So if there's something you just can't stand every month that you see in the minutes, or something about it, please let myself or Veronica know. And then other staff, like I mentioned, is myself. And Jackie has my assistant working with you. So in your bylaws, the next page talks about conflict of interest. These are the items that would constitute a conflict of interest for the Zoning Board of Appeals. The big one that you, that usually individuals get caught up in is if you receive a 300-foot notice for the case that's being decided. For every variance request that the Zoning Board of Appeals calls, we're required to send a 300-foot notice to all of the property owners that are within 300 feet of that property. So if you get one of those in the mail, that's actually a pretty good, easy decision for you. You get to show up and say, I got this notice, I can't participate. But there's a couple other items in here. If it has to do with your work, if you're being compensated, or if it has to do with anything that you have a direct interest in, or a relative that includes in-laws and close friends that you would be deciding on. And like, again, that is in your bylaws, so you can always look there. If you feel that you have a conflict of interest, you know, like I mentioned, you can declare it at the beginning of the agenda. At that time, when we get to that agenda item, we would ask you to leave your seat and leave the room, not participate in discussion deliberation of that case. Once that's done, you can come back into the room and participate again. If it's the only agenda, agenda item, then you're more than welcome to just be excused from the meeting, unless we need you for something else. But that's why we have alternates for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Does anybody have any questions on conflict of interest? The next item is open meetings, and, and this is a big topic. This is a, it's really important. All of the Zoning Board of Appeals business needs to be conducted at an open meeting that's properly noticed. There's no deliberation or discussion with the applicants, or members of the public, or other Zoning Board of Appeals members outside of a meeting when there's an application. And I would extend that to if you anticipate to have an application for that item. It's very important to, you know, come open-minded and to also hear everything that everyone else gets to hear about a case. If you're having a conversation with somebody in the grocery store about a case and getting information on it, you may be forming an opinion about that topic. Not everybody else is has that same availability that you do, and so you have additional information. It also doesn't look well if you're having coffee, or you know, dining with the applicant as you're sitting on the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I would just encourage you to not talk to anybody about the case, or deliberate about it. And that goes for when you're out at a site visit as well. If you go out there, you know, if there's a house there or something, you're going to knock on the door and say, I'm with the, you know, the ZBA, I'm here to take a look at your property. And then politely just say, but, you know, I can't really discuss the case with you, but, you know, mind if I look around your property. Everybody signs off that where we can go on their property when they sign on for a, when they sign the application. So they shouldn't be surprised when you show up, but you know, if they are, but it's always, you know, obviously polite to knock on the door and let them know that you're walking around on their property for them. And then if you do do a site visit, and you happen to run into another ZBA member out there, I would encourage for one of you to leave the property and wait until the other one leaves, just so that you don't end up discussing the application, like I said, outside of the open meeting. You, you are, as I kind of mentioned, free to talk with staff. Jackie or myself, or, you know, someone else in the office, if you need more information, or you have questions. Always feel free to reach out. We're not, you know, we're not members of the board, and we'll just provide you the documentation and what you need as well. So if you are out, and people are asking you questions, or you receive an email, I would direct them to the office. You know, if you get a phone call, say, please call the office, give them the number. You get an email, forward it to the office, and let the person know that we'll be handling it in the office to try not to, you know, have this dialogue behind the scenes of any, of any sort. And then, if you can excuse yourself, and if at the last resort, you're standing in the grocery store, and somebody just will not let you go, the next time you come to a meeting, to kind of disclose that you ran into so-and-so, and this is what you were told, but I would still would encourage you not to have a dialogue with them. If you need to stand there and just listen, not say anything, not agree, not disagree, just because you can't get away, but then to come back to the meeting, like I said, and, and mention this interaction, so that it's all in the open up. Do you have the sign-in sheet? This is the sign-in sheet, so that you get to say so this sheet you did earlier was just so that we know how to track you down or get ahold of you, if you need to have a special meeting, and how to get your packet. That'll be available for each meeting. Yes. Yep, you just initial next to your name there. So I don't know if anybody went through that part of it, you know, that we have a mailbox for you to get your packets out of. Is everybody familiar with that, not familiar with that? Okay, okay.
I don't think so.
Chad, you.
Oh, around the 10.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
So we'll send out an email and say, your packets are ready to be picked up. Here's a digital copy of the packet. If you want a hard copy, you can pick it up, or it's available after this time, so that you can swing in and grab that to read before your, for your meeting, and have the information to go out and do your site visit. So the next page talks about the state laws. I didn't print those out for you, but these are where we are getting our powers from. In, in local government, we have the Planning Enabling Act that deals mostly with the Planning Commission and their functions. And then we have the Zoning Enabling Act, and that's where it talks about the ZBA, and where you get your powers from, and what you can do. Most of that is carried back down into the zoning ordinance, or is information that I need to know to support you as far as noticing and different requirements like that. So it's not something, you know, if you're interested and you want to know how we gain, gain the ability to do what we do, that's where it comes from. So what is zoning? We have an ordinance that's adopted to help regulate the use of land and activities. You can pass those on if you want. You know, we have the Torch Lake zoning ordinance. I mentioned that we have that. It is also on the website, too, if you ever need to take a look at it. We are in the process of rewriting the zoning ordinance right now. It's about a year-long process that the Planning Commission will do, and then the board will ultimately approve. So things may change a little bit in your ordinance in the future, but we will get you new copies and let you know as that's going on. So the Zoning Board of Appeals roles. There's four main things that we deal with in Torch Lake Township related to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Those are going to be the interpretation of the text and the map. Appeal of an administrative decision, that's an appeal that, of a decision that I've made. A non-use variance, where somebody wants to build closer to a property line, or something like that, and then non-conformities. So the non-conformities are typically structures that are built too close to a property line. And I'll get in a little bit more detail about that. But the procedure and how that happens and what that looks like is all in chapter 20 of the zoning ordinance, which I emailed out late last night, but we also included a copy of it in the packet Jackie just handed out on top, has chapter 20. This is kind of where you can always go back to, to see what you're supposed to be doing and looking at in the zoning ordinance. We also included in that packet underneath, that's your rules and procedures for you to be able to take home and write on if you'd like to. Awesome. So interpretations of texts and a map. This, the map interpretation doesn't happen frequently, just because we have better technology than we used to. We don't hand-drawn maps anymore, where we use a computer, it's digitized. But if for some reason, somebody comes in and their property's not zoned on the map, or there's a road right-of-way that gets split up, or you can't tell where that line is, somebody can come to the Zoning Board of Appeals and ask for you to interpret the map to say, where is this line, and what am I zoned? That's one way, one thing to do. And then the interpretation of the text is when, you know, there's something ambiguous in the text, you're trying to get an answer to something. What does this mean? How does this work? And that's, somebody will file an application for that, and then the, the Zoning Board of Appeals goes through this process where you look in the zoning ordinance, and you kind of have to read the whole thing, because you read the document as a whole, and figure out what it means. The definitions, there are definitions in the ordinance. If there's not a definition in the ordinance, then we use. If there's not a definition in the ordinance, then we use just a dictionary definition for, for that word. When you're doing an interpretation and trying to figure that out, very rarely is there interpretation of the zoning ordinance. Most of the time, because I've made the interpretation and they appeal my determination of what that is. I tell somebody, this is your front yard setback. And they, if they disagree with that, then they're appealing my decision. They're not asking you to say, where is my front yard setback? That's not, that's not your job really. Where is this? I'm the one that needs to tell them that and then they come and appeal my decision to you. So you really, on occasion, you'll get this, but it's a very, very rare occurrence. The next item is the appeals of the administrative decision. Like I mentioned, it's when I make a decision and then the applicant appeals it to you. And then you confirm or overturn my decision, just like an appeals court for a court case. So I, even if it's, say, I deny somebody a land use permit because they don't meet a, they don't meet a setback. They can appeal that decision to deny their permit because they don't believe that setback should apply to them. And we did have that where someone was thinking that they didn't have to have a setback from a private easement, from a road easement. They had a private road on it. And because it was a private road, they felt that they didn't need to have a setback from that. The front road, the, the road or the front setback did not apply. And I told them, no, that it did. And so at one time, they were thinking about coming to the zoning board of appeals to appeal my decision that they had to have that front setback. They didn't, they've not ended up doing that. But that would be an example of something you would have to look at. And you'd look through the ordinance, you know, look at the definitions, look at what the rest of the text says to figure out what that decision is. And it won't hurt my feelings. So whatever you come up with, you know, is just fine. So we're all trying to do the best we can with the information we have available. And sometimes, you know, you have this, this board of five additional members and I have had where somebody's appealed my decision and you get a member that comes to a meeting and they say something and you go, you know what, I agree with you. Yeah, overturn, you know, it's more information, it's a different perspective. You know, and that's what you're here for. You're to be an independent impartial body to help and give relief to an individual if they have some sort of a claim or an appeal to that. The next item you'll deal with quite a bit is going to be non-conformities. A lot of times people talk about non-conformities as being grandfathered, they're grandfathered items. So you have a house that's built into, you know, and here I have an example of it's built into the waterfront setback and somebody wants to add a second story onto that. And so their addition is not going to meet the required setbacks. And so they come to the ZDA to get a variance to be able to do that. Non-conformities, the only time you're really going to deal with them is if somebody wants to add on or change that structure that is in the setback. We do allow for somebody to do an addition on their house or on their structure as long as that new addition meets all of the setbacks. So that's a little different than what's been done in the past. We just changed that section of the zoning ordinance. But that allows for, you know, this, this house sits in the waterfront setback, but say on the backside, they want to do an addition. That addition meets all of the required setbacks for the zoning district. So they can come in and get a land use permit and not have to come through the zoning board of appeals to do that addition because they're not expanding the non-conformity, they're not, you know, the addition is meeting the ordinance. So they're not required to come to the ZDA anymore to deal with that. The item that we're going to be dealing with the most at the ZDA level will be non-use variances. So these are also called dimensional variances, just variances. These are what we're going to be dealing with. They typically deal in setbacks. As you've noticed, my examples are usually with setbacks. So, you know, you're allowing, a setback variance allows for a construction closer to the property line than what the ordinance allows. Sometimes you end up in a height variance to go higher than what our ordinance allows. And other times it's sized to either go larger or smaller than what the ordinance allows. Either in dimensions, we require that houses have a minimum dimension size and a minimum square footage. So they have to be 960 square feet and they have to be 20, is it 20 by 20 or 24 by 24? 20 by 20 of living area. So if somebody wanted to build a house that was 10 by 10 and, which isn't realistic, but you know, it's, it's less than that 20 by 20 and it's less than the 960, they'd end up here because I'd have to deny them a permit. But we have to, I'll get into why, you know, the decision-making on that part of it. But, or you have somebody that wants to go larger. So somebody that needs to build into a setbacks because they want to go larger or if we have some sort of a limitation similar to the height, you know, they want to somehow expand their structure past someplace that, that we have in the ordinance. Something that the ZDA cannot grant a variance for is a use variance. And this is under state law, we're not allowed to grant use variances. And my example here is somebody comes in and applies to put in a duplex where they only allow a single-family dwelling. The ZDA will never see that application, hopefully, because I'm going to say you can't apply for this. You don't have a right to go and do that. And that helps to make sure that people follow the zoning ordinance. So if it's a use, you know, say it's a dog kennel that's in a residential neighborhood and we're going, that's not a use that's allowed in the zoning ordinance. You can't do it, there's no way to apply for it. And that helps to protect the integrity of our zoning, our zoning ordinance. Yeah.
On these, you said the common one is probably setbacks. What is the, is there a ratio or is it normally, does it, do they normally get their, do they normally pass or is there a, what kind of a type of?
No, and you, you don't, one of the things for the zoning board of appeals is you don't rely on past decisions of the zoning board of appeals. Each case is unique in it. But I will tell you that I, Jackie and I were talking about it earlier and I'm like, this would be a great statistic. How many are approved versus how many are denied? And I would say overwhelmingly, they're mostly denied. And that really is how a ZDA should function. You're going to look at the standard, you're going to make a decision based on those standards. But this person, this applicant is essentially asking to break the law within the township. So they, they need a really good reason to break the law. And usually it has to do with your property is not buildable in a certain way to, you know, allow you to build a home on it. Say, for example, you have property, it has a, a lot of wetlands on it and then it has a big hill on the other side of it. You have this very small area that you can build on, but it also happens to violate the side yard setback. You know, that may be an instance where you'd say, okay, that makes sense because they can't build anywhere else on there. And, you know, it's just a limited space. Plus we have to have a house that's at least 20 by 20 and 960 square feet. So you have these competing interests. So, you know, variances are very rarely granted. And if we do get in a situation where we find that there's a variance that we are typically granting for some reason or another, we'd want to look to the planning commission and say, hey, you might want to change this regulation because a lot of people are coming up against this issue to try to build or something like that. If we, because right now, you know, if we have a 35-foot setback and all of a sudden we make it now 50 feet, you're going to have a lot of people that are going to get caught up in the change from 35 to 50. So you're going to go, why'd you do that? You know, everybody's coming in to get a variance, you made all these non-conformities. That's a, a big issue and you'd say, we got to change that. They wouldn't, hopefully never do that. Nobody would never go for it. I put a little diagram in here related to lots. It's kind of small on this drawing actually, now that I've made it. So I gave you some notes area there about lot lines and setbacks. So, you know, you have the property lines, you know, the outside. Sometimes the property lines go to the center of the road. Sometimes they don't, it's all, it'll be on your drawing. But then you have your setbacks, the distance from that property line to where you can start construction. You know, so you have your front setback, which is going to be, is, I don't remember these, is the front 50 Jackie typically? Okay. So you have 50 feet from the edge of the road right of way, 10 on your sides and 35 from your back property line. You can build anywhere that's not in that area. So those are your setbacks, those areas where there's no construction allowed. And those create your building envelope. So that whole area that's within there, that's this light green area, that's your building envelope. That's where you're allowed to construct, that's outside of the setbacks.
Is it in the, is it in the planning book? Is it great clear about where the, the, I'll say the lakeside property line is? Or when you start measuring, is that, is that clear or is that?
It's, it depends. And that's something that there's an amendment actually in front of the planning commission. So on Torch Lake, it's at the water's edge is where you measure the lake setback from. On, right. And on the bay, it is an elevation above sea level. So the planning commission, and is actually holding a public hearing next week to change the high watermark to torch, on Torch Lake to be an elevation as well. Because it's more, it is more consistent than the water's edge. You know, depending on which way the wind blows, you may lose a foot or something like that. So that's not something that you'd get really into detail here from the zoning board of appeals side. Hopefully we won't have any interpretations or anything on that. But, I mean, you'll get involved in if they need a setback from the waterfront setback. But, you know, where the line exactly is, is they're going to show you where that line is. You're not going to have to determine them where that line is. So when you're processing your applications, we have, we call them findings of fact. There's criteria that the zoning board of appeals must make your decision on. They're all loca, they're located in chapter 20, but I put them all on here on this slide in section 20.06. And I'll give you this section in the staff report with each of your cases so that you have it as you're flipping through, you can write on it. You can look at it. I like to try to give you any parts of the ordinance that are relevant. You know, Jackie and I deal in the ordinance every day frequently. You know, you're not reading through, you don't know where every section may be. So I, we try to help you out and give you those sections that you might want to look at or that are relevant to your request. You know, don't always limit your search to that, you know, look through the ordinance. But that will give you a place to start when you're trying to make your decision. But these dimensional variance standards are very important and the ZDA will be required to go through each of these for every case that you have and make a finding. It is kind of tedious during the meeting to have to do that, but it's the best way to protect the township and our decision should it be challenged in court for why we made it and so that we're consistent in making these decisions. All four of these standards have to be met in order to grant a variance. And if there's any one that's not, then, then the variance is required to be denied. So I'm, I'll just go through these very briefly. And then we do have some cases that we'll kind of look at that the past ZDA has gone through to kind of help explain and walk you through some of this and some of their decision-making. So the first one, that a special condition or circumstance exists that are so peculiar to the land, structure or building involved and which are not applicable to most other land structures or buildings in the same district. This is kind of like I was saying, where, you know, you have a piece of property that there's wetlands, there's topography. We do have some old carousels that just don't meet zoning. They're very narrow, they're very small in lot size that you may run into. So it's something where not everybody on the, on the block has the same situation. It's very specific to the property, very narrowly tailored. And it's related to, typically it's related to the land more so than a structure or building. But you could have some situations where it's very specific to, to the structure or building that would require the variance. Item B, the literal interpretation of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would deprive the applicant of property rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district. This would be similar to I kind of mentioned. If you have a piece of property that's too small that you can't build a house on because you can't meet your 960 square feet or your 20 by 20 area. You may have a lot that, if your lot is 30 feet wide, you have 10-foot side yard setbacks, you have 10 feet wide in the middle to build and you can't, you can't build a house that then meets our ordinance to have that 20 by 20 area. So something's got to give in that situation. And that would be up to the individual request in the zoning board of appeals to determine if what they're asking for is enough to, to give them that property right. Item C, the special conditions or circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. I think that, did you bring up Laura about the? Yeah. Yeah, and I know that in the draft ordinance I was working on, that one has both in there. So it doesn't say any ordinance, but that there is, is it case law that does that? Okay.
If they, if you didn't have predecessor entitled, then the rules would change every time, you know, you sold the property or it changed hands. And I think generally speaking, anything that happens to a property runs with the property. It doesn't run with the owner. So, so I, I feel fairly strongly that that, that should be observed in any decisions that we make.
And that's, one of the cases we have in here is the one where you brought that up actually. So we can talk about that a little bit. But, you know, it's, it's not a condition that was caused by the owner. It's not a, just a want that they have. I want to put it here because I like it better there than somewhere else on my property, I should say. You know, that would be a result of the applicant. Or with the predecessor, it's, you know, someone else did it. And now I'm, you know, I'm at fault, well, I didn't know. Well, this is saying that, you know, you bought it, you should essentially be aware, but, you know, kind of buyer beware, but somebody else did it. Just because someone else did it doesn't give you the relief to continue to, or get permission to continue or enlarge something, go into the setback further or something like that because someone else did it.
Well, and, and example, I think of another case we had is they built right on the lot line and then, or whoever built the house. And then the applicant came in and said, well, we want a porch and we're, we're not the ones that built on the, on the lot line. Well, that means that every time a house was sold, you could use that as an excuse.
Yeah, that's a good example of, of something that someone did previous. And not, they didn't, they just didn't know where the lot got divided or zoning came into play and kind of changed it. So item D, that authorization, authorizing of the variance will not do substantial detriment to the neighboring property and will not be contrary to the spirit and purpose of this zoning ordinance. I think that's pretty self-explanatory for that standard and requirement.
Sarah, do we know if that's going to bother neighbors?
You know, you will have the public that'll come in and during the public hearing on an application. And, but a lot of it would be up to the zoning board of appeals to determine if it's something that's consistent, that's been done in the neighborhood already or if it looks like something that's already been done in the neighborhood. Or if you're going to be approving something that's a nuisance. you're gonna be approving something that's a nuisance to the neighborhood. It really needs to be bigger than even just the neighbor. You know, a lot of times a neighbor would come in and say, well, they wanna build five feet from the property line and, you know, I don't want to cause I'm the neighbor. But if everybody's five feet off the property line, you know, that's, you're kinda going, well, it's no difference on the other side of your house. But it's not just because the neighbor thinks that it'll impact them, it's kind of a broader community neighborhood when you're looking at that. For that. So, um, the last page just has my contact information and Jackie's contact information in case you don't have it. As just a place, uh, just another place to have it. So we'll go into a couple of examples of the zoning board of appeals. They're in that packet that I handed out that had the, um, chapter twenty and the bylaws in it. When we deal with a case at the planning commission, they have, the first one says example, ZBA example number one on the top of it. There's, there's four examples. Yep. You know, this is what your, the application for the ZBA looks like. Somebody comes in and, and drops the application off here at the township and pays the fee to the zoning office and we handle the processing of that. And we look over the application, try to make sure that all the information is here, the site plan has the information that you need on it. Try to make it as complete as possible for you with what the ordinance requires anyways. And, um, get that all together for you for your meeting. Like I mentioned, we have the packets that'll be available prior to the meeting for you to be able to read through everything. Once you come to a planning commission meeting, if he's not been, or I'm sorry, a zoning board of appeals meeting, if you've not been to one, um, when we get to the case for each application, uh, we will have a public hearing for that case. That's where the public gets to come up and, um, essentially make their case for against the application, um, say whatever they'd like about the application. During that time, uh, that's a time for input to the zoning board of appeals, so it's not a time for discussion amongst the ZBA or with the public or the person speaking. It's really, I know it's hard to sit there, but you kinda have to just, as a member of the ZBA, um, try to refrain from engaging with members of the public, whoever's speaking, you know, or, uh, other members of the ZBA and hopefully your chair will help you and if not, then I will help to remind you, um, that it's really just a time to receive the input from the public. Following the public hearing with the public comment portion, then the zoning board of appeals will start discussing and deliberating, um, the topic. Usually in that time I would give any background or additional information or something that may have come up. We will have heard from the applicant as well as kind of explaining their case for the variance request. So, and then the zoning board of appeals, if you have all the information you need, will go and look through that findings of fact and start making standards for that. So we've got, uh, the ZBA example number one for this applicant, they were looking for a, um, setback variance. And you'll see on, hmm, it's the fourth page, there's a site plan in your packet. So each of your applications will have a site plan that will help to show you what they're looking to do. In this, uh, site plan, they were talking about this garage that's on the bottom of the plan. And that they needed a, a variance from this road, um, which in the water, the water becomes your front and the road becomes your rear for your setbacks. It's a little kinda confusing, but the only thing that you need to know is that they weren't gonna meet that variance request, they wanted a reduction for this garage to be able to be built on this property. So the zoning board of appeals ended up denying this application for a garage. And you can, you know, you'll take these home, you can read through them too, to kinda see what they, uh, the different requests they have. But, you know, one of the reasons the applicant says is that they need a garage large enough to fit their boat with a trailer and their classic car in and there's just not enough space where they wanna put it, um, on the property. And there's also an electrical easement that was had to do with the road, um, that they were using as a justification to obtain the variance request. So the ZBA, I, we included the minutes from each of these cases, so you can kind of read through and look at the discussion that the, uh, that the zoning board of appeals had on each of the cases. So the last two pages in this first packet talk about, uh, the discussion that the planning commission had. And then the juicy stuff starts on, on the back of the first page of the minutes where they get into the findings of fact, for what they know about the property. So the previous zoning, or the previous zoning board of appeals went through and did a, a motion for each, um, and voted, did a formal vote on each item. You're welcome to do that, you're welcome to do it as a straw poll, but we do have to have items. You can't just say, oh, looks good, sounds good. You know, you see here where they've got, one of their findings of fact is electrical and road easements restrict the size of the property. You know, that's, that's a finding of fact, that's a fact of the property. This talks about they were unaware of the setback at the time of purchasing the property. I mean, that's a fact, they may not be aware of it. So those are some of like kind of just general findings of fact about the property that you'll find, sometimes it'll be, you know, this lot was created prior to zoning. That's a good finding of fact to have, um, that it was, it's an existing non-conforming lot. As you go down and it's about, I don't know, a third of the way it's, uh, says the members of the ZBA discuss the application as it applies to section twenty point zero six. And this is where they start to go through, um, each of those standards, A through D, and address each of them. Some of these are not very good standards, honestly, for motions that they made. They're just say, it doesn't, does not meet or it does meet. Ideally, you would say it does not meet the standard because of something is, is the best way to, um, make your finding. But as time goes on, we all learn more and, you know, you have different numbers and different ways of, of running things. So, um, I would encourage you and I may even when you're making a finding, making a finding, say why? Why do you find this finding's not met? And you're gonna look at me and go, well, I find the standards not met because the lot is just like every other lot that we have in the township, there's nothing special here. Okay, good enough answer for me, you know, just, I need some justification in it. So, um, you can see here where they went through each of the findings for this ZBA case and, um, ended up finding, deny, made a motion at the end to deny the request, variance request. So item number two also deals with a garage. This was the one, uh, that I mentioned earlier that Laura talked about a previous owner. This was a small shed that she had placed and it's eight feet from the side property line, um, instead of ten feet. There's a little drawing of where the shed is in your packet and what the shed looks like. This started from a, uh, a violation, she either called the township to say, the county sent me a violation letter or, uh, the zoning administrator was out on the neighboring property and saw this new structure without a permit and found out that it was too close to the property line. So she came into, uh, this property owner came in to get a variance request to keep this shed in the same location. Some of her arguments were the previous owner, which happened to be her ex-husband, placed it there and she didn't know. It had, you know, heavy equipment in it and so it would be difficult for her to move somewhere else. You know, the driveway was there, so it was easy access. This is another application that the zoning board of appeals ended up denying, um, and telling her that she needed to move this shed. One of the reasons that when the zoning board of appeals looked at it is that there's other areas on this property for this shed to be located. The property's not too narrow or too small that you, you cannot, you, you could place it somewhere else, it may not be where she wants to place it, it may not be the most aesthetically pleasing location, but there are other locations to place this shed. And so that was something the, uh, the zoning board of appeals did discuss, um, quite a bit in this application in trying to decide, um, if it's something that should be granted.
This one was denied.
This one was denied.
Then she had to move the shed.
Yeah. She just pulled a permit recently to move the shed and she's just gonna move it closer to her house. She's gonna move it over the two feet from the side yard setback. Yeah, so it would meet the setbacks then. So, um, that also has the minutes attached to it. You can see some of the discussion, why the decisions were made. There's a lot of blue on this, but that's just because it was a spelling error, cause there's nothing, um, it's just fine, that's how we have to do the minutes and keep the minutes. So, um, does anybody have any questions about this second example?
How long had that building been there before?
Um, a couple of years, less than five, I'm gonna say, that it has been there.
And nobody complained about it?
It did, there was a, somebody complained to the county about not having a building permit. Originally, so then the county, to get a building permit, you have to have a land use permit, so you call the township, ask for a land use permit, um, and then found that it was too close to the property.
That's quite a shed they had there, without going through the process, wow.
Yeah. And that does happen, sheds are a frequent, frequent culprit of violations, just because people move them in, they don't realize they need a permit or that they have to meet the setbacks. But a lot of times like this one, you know, they're movable sheds too, so a lot of times people are just moving to where they need to be. Um, so this third one, um, this person put in a request to put an accessory structure on a vacant parcel. The zoning ordinance does not allow for you to have an accessory structure without a house. You're required to build your house, um, first or at the same time. This person asked for, um, the structure to be built prior to. This is another application that was denied. As, as the theme when you're going through this, um, for not meeting the standards for approval. It didn't meet the, the four criteria. And if you see, um, through here, it doesn't meet any of the four criteria. It's on the bottom of the la, the bottom of the front side of the last page, starts with the item A and then you go to the, uh, to the backside there and it, all of the criteria failed. And I would say that it failed because it's not unique. If, if the zoning board of appeals granted permission for this individual to build their garage on a vacant piece of property, what's unique about that compared to anybody else in, in the community when you're looking at it? You know, I know that they need to store things and they, they, you know, want to do that. But, um, you know, it really has an impact for future individuals, they why them but not me. And that's why we have the criteria too. That's why it's important to look at the criteria and follow the criteria, um, in making your decisions. So the last example that we have for the planning commission is actually a variance that was approved. Is it the planning, is it the zoning board of appeals? Sorry, who's on the board of appeals? And this is a variance to decrease the rear yard. And this has to do with being on a critical dune and high risk erosion area, um, where it makes it sometimes difficult for setbacks to be met. So a lot of it, um, on the bay property, there's a lot of dunes, there's additional permitting that's required under the state to be able to build in certain areas that are, um, high risk erosion areas or they're critical dunes are classified by the state as that. So they require additional permits for that. So this individual wanted a setback variance, um, because of the location of where the dunes are and how they could build on it. So dunes are one of those items, you know, when I'm talking about wetlands and, and hills and, um, narrow properties that the zoning board of appeals may wanna consider, um, as limiting areas on, on a piece of property. At the same time, just because there's a dune on there doesn't mean they need a variance and maybe that's where they wanna build and not where they have to build or they wanna build something that's a mansion when they can build something smaller and be able to meet setbacks. They're each individual, unique cases that you, you know, to look at. So when you say, oh, well, these, this ZBA granted a variance for a doom permit, they all should get one. Nope, you still need to be, look at each individual property, um, each individual case and look at the criteria to make sure that, um, that it makes sense for what is being required. So this one, you know, the minutes are included as well. You can see, um, the discussion that happened, um, why things happen and, um, you can see this wasn't just by the motions that were made. It wasn't necessarily a, an easy decision for, for the zoning board of appeals and there were a lot at play. But it is something, um, that I think the planning commission will have to do with. Actually, next week, one of the cases is a, has dunes involved in it, in that application. You get to start out with an easy one, right?
Yeah.
There's that, there's no easy case, they're all, like I said, you all, you just have to look at each of them on their own merits based on the criteria that you have. And, um, there's five members for a reason, so you may not all agree on something, but it ends up being a majority of whatever the decision is, uh, you know, for, for that standard. And speaking to that, um, the zoning board of appeals, it functions a little bit differently in that for granting a variance, you have to have, um, or denying and making a decision, I should say, you have to have a majority of the number of people that are on the zoning board of appeals. So the ZBA is a five-member board. You have to have three votes, one way or the other, to make a decision. So if there's only three members present, all three have to vote the same way because it's based on the number of seats and not based on the number of people present at the meeting. And that's why we have the alternates, um, available so that hopefully at all times we can have a five-member board to make a decision. And that's why it's also important, if you don't think that you're gonna be able to make a meeting, um, you know, let us know so that we can make sure that the alternate's up to speed and prepared to participate in the decision. Versus, you know, at the last minute or just not showing up, just, you know, please call, let us know so that we can make sure that we have enough members present, um, cause in the ZBA, it's, it's much more important to have everybody than just having a quorum of, of people available. So, and if you can't make a meeting, feel free to, you know, call Jackie and let her know and she'll make sure that everybody finds out. I think that's all that I really wanted to touch on. Does anybody have any questions about anything? Any concerns, like more information about?
Yeah. I've been trying to attend some different meetings here in the last couple of months to see how they work. And it seems like when you get a, a board here, there's not a lot of conversation between you'll speak or somebody will speak, but there's not a lot of conversation between the members. It's almost like it's stifled. And maybe that's just, I'm thinking, I'm wondering, how do you get, how do I get a chance to really talk about something to either clarify or express my opinion to, to the other members?
Well, on the ZBA, that generally happens when you, um, go into closed deliberation. And so then the, um, then the board members speak to each other and, um, and ask questions and discuss.
That's when you do it?
Yes. And the other, the other part of the meeting is really just to listen, like you, like Sarah was saying earlier, the board has, it, their job is to sit and listen to what everybody has to say.
I was just wondering, when you get down, you talk about what you've heard and everything. I was just wondering, when you get down, you talk about what you heard and everything. I haven't sat in many of those meetings, so I didn't know they existed.
Yeah, there hasn't been, uh, an appeal in a while.
Yeah, it's been quite a few months, maybe July, April, it's been that long?
It would seem like there needs to be just a hand-to-hand conversation between the members.
So, yeah, and I think that's important, once you get to, it'll depend, um, you'll kind of get in a flow and the chairperson will kind of lead you. If it's something where, once you close, uh, you know, the, the public comment portion, you could have some discussion, questions. A lot of times there's an opportunity to be able to ask questions on the applicant. Um, you know, once everybody kind of settles, um, you know, the chair may say, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Um, and that would be the time to ask applicants to clarify things for you. It's important to...
When I go through, if I had a question at that point, do I go through the chair? Or do I ask?
No, it's proper to ask the chair if, um, if you may ask the applicant a question. Because otherwise people start talking in, that's the only way to control the meeting and not have everybody talking at once.
Yeah, yeah, and so it's, and that's what you would only wanna ask, you know, you'd wanna get to that part after we've closed all the public comment portion. So, um, when you have public getting up and, and telling you, um, it's not appropriate at that time to be asking questions. You're gonna wanna write them down and hold them until after we get through that part.
Notice that stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's just to control the meeting. I mean, it, it seems kind of harsh to the public, um, you know, a lot of people say, well, there's no dialogue between the board and the public. But it's really your position is to, to take the input. And then you're deliberating it amongst yourselves based on the criteria. You know what you have to base your decision on. And hopefully don't have the emotional attachment that, you know, other people may have and makes it sometimes more difficult to see exactly what we need to get to. But yeah, to, to definitely check with the chair before asking questions. But a lot of times, you know, the chair will say, okay, does anybody have questions for the applicant? And then, I don't know, not all speak at the same time, but she'll keep you online. To ask questions.
Um, question, when you're in deliberation and you're discussing the situation and you yourself wanna raise a question to the zoning administration through your, I would ask the chairperson if I could address the zoning administrator with a question for input? Is that appropriate?
That's appropriate, I mean, the chair runs the meeting typically. I'm kind of involved, you know, I'm always making comments when you're talking anyways. So it's a little bit more of a free dialogue with me because I, you know, I'm staff, I'm supporting you, I'm helping you get to somewhere. But always feel free to ask the chair, I mean, they may get sick of hearing me talk, so, no, no more questions from staff. But, um, you know, uh, that would be appropriate to ask or, um, you know, just to, to look at me and ask a question and, um, that, like I said before, that's what I'm here for. So anytime you have a question, or even procedurally, it may not be the case, but you're like, okay, what do we do next? Or can we do this next? Is this an option? Say you're working on a variance request and you, you need more information. It is an option to say, we need more information on this and we need to, you know, postpone our decision on this. Or maybe you don't know how to do, you know, make that happen. So feel free to ask or, um, if you even say like, oh, do we need a second on that motion? You know, everybody's in it together and we wanna make sure everything's done right. So feel free to ask, even if it's a procedural question, just to make sure that we get it done right. And I'd hate for you to go home at the end of the night going, what did we just do? Or, you know, either feeling rushed in the decision. You may have times where you have a case and you'll show up and people will have letters on your desk. You'll have a pile of letters or you'll have a bunch of public that'll come and make comments. And there's nothing wrong with saying, I need more time. I need more time to be able to review these letters, to digest the information we received tonight. And to say, let's come back to this at our next meeting. Or let's schedule a special meeting in two weeks to come back to this. That's a completely appropriate response, as long as you receive that. If nobody said anything, that's not a good answer, but, um, try to come prepared. But yeah, if there will be cases, I'm sure that'll have, have more input from the public and, um, will kind of feel overwhelming and it, it's okay to, to step back and digest that. And, um, you know, that's the first time that you may have heard from the applicant and gotten their presentation. And you can get a lot of information from that, that maybe you don't read in the application, that they've not provided that. Um, but when they get up and speak, you may have a totally, a completely different idea or thought about the full application. And that's what we're here for, you know, you show up with an open mind, having done the research, with an open mind, kind of knowing the process. And someone may give you some information that, you know, really could change where you thought this was gonna go. But yeah, feel, you know, we never want you to be rushed in making your decision. You need to make a good, solid decision. When you're doing it, at the same time, you can't just stall and drag it out. You do have to make a decision at some point. And I will tell you if you are stalling and need to make decisions. And no, I would not recommend that you continue to table that, um, should've come to that, so.
If we have public input, is afterwards, we would do a site visit? Is that kind of the way you do that? If somebody's gonna complain about the view or something, then I wanna go there and see the view myself?
If you need to, yeah, go back out and see it. You know, if, if somebody brings up something on the site that you missed the first time you were out there, uh, you know, if you went out before the, you know, that, the meeting, um, and you didn't see it and you need to go back out and you go, you know what, that's a great point. I'd like to, uh, come back to this meeting, this, a decision on this at a later time so I can go back out and visit the site.
So I was just going to mention, um, when Dave Barr was chair, he, um, required that the alternates prepare, visit the site and attend the meetings. And I didn't, and I didn't know if we were going to continue with that. I would say the argument for it is that, um, that if you, and if somebody's sick at the last minute, an alternate, if they haven't prepared, they won't be ready to, to, um, participate in the decision. I don't know if we wanna discuss that, but...
You know, I would, they, the alternates get paid, right, to do that? Yeah. Okay. Yep, yeah, I mean, I personally, and I've seen, uh, quite a few townships go to that method actually because you, like I said, it's important that we have a full board and you end up with somebody forgetting about the meeting or not showing up, getting sick at the last minute. So, um, I think if you wanna discuss that, but I definitely would encourage you, especially because the township board is on board with that and paying the alternates, to continue to be involved and be present at the meetings, um, if they're available. And, um, be ready to participate, um, in the decision if necessary and called upon.
Well, I guess I would recommend that we continue with that. If an alternate is not going to be available, just like if a regular board member is not available, give as much notice as possible so that everybody knows how many people we're working with and...
Yeah, yeah. And we will have one additional member that's not here, they're from the planning commission. So that person, the planning commissioner, will have to pick a member of their board to, uh, come and sit on the zoning board of appeals. So that's on their agenda for next week, so hopefully they make a decision and have someone call over, um, so.
Their meeting is Tuesday, correct?
Yes, so what I would...
That person is not going to really be prepared then?
Right, so that's what I was just gonna say. I think that it's important that we will likely have an alternate sit instead of that planning commissioner because we don't...
Pardon? Okay, so, um, I know Marcia's, you're an alternate again this year, right? And who's the other alternate? Okay.
So we'll have four members, um, present. I can, uh, let that applicant know so that they can decide if they'd like to wait because we only have four members, present, you know, they can make the decision that they'd like to hold off for a month so that we can have everybody.
Which one, which one is the one that, uh, you can't see?
On the variance request?
Okay, down on, what is that, Bay?
Uh, Bayview, yeah. Yeah, so we'll reach out to them and let them know, um, let them know that and then let them make the decision if they'd like to proceed with a four-member board or if they'd like to wait for a five-member board. And then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Any other questions for me, concerns? I know it's overwhelming probably, I threw a ton of information at you.
Does this start Wednesday of the month, does that take me next year or does this start December?
January.
It starts in January?
It'll start in January. Um, and if we don't have any business to attend to, we'll cancel the meeting. So put it on your calendar that we'll have one every month, but we'll let you know if you don't. And it's pretty far out because we have to publish in the newspaper and everything. So usually about a month before the meeting, we'll let you know if we have any applications. With the ZDA decisions, the, the clock for an appeal of that decision to the court starts when either the decision is signed in writing or the minutes are approved. In the past, I guess we did have the, that letter that went out that the chair signed. So I guess that's a decision in writing. So, um, and, but that wasn't, it was in the ordinance? Anyways, so there may be a time when, if we don't have a meet, if we don't have a meeting for a long period of time, we may need to have a meeting so that we can approve some minutes, so that we can start some clocks instead of letting them just go on forever. But we'll have to, we'll look at that, so, um, but anyways, we'll try to, try to communicate and the most communication will probably be through your county, Torch Lake Township email. Hopefully everybody got those up and running. And if you need help getting it on your phone or something like that, we can work with the IT company to get that all set up. Or if you wanna forward it or, you know, something like that, somehow notify yourself so that you, you know, get those emails. No, Kristen, you can come to the meeting next week and then when we get to that agenda item, yeah, you can step out and go to the conference room. And if you want to, uh, you can watch the meeting on YouTube, it streams live. All our meetings are streamed live and on YouTube. So you can watch there or sit in the hallway so you can hear what, you know, what's happening. Um, but yeah, we do need you for the support one, cause otherwise I'd say you don't have to come at all. But, cause we need you for the other one, it'd be great if you could show up and... Okay. Anything else? Well, I appreciate, thanks for everyone for coming and taking the crash course in the ZDA. And trying to get familiarized a little bit with how we do things and how it functions. And I'm sure after this first meeting, you'll have some other questions and, uh, you know, feel free to let us know or chat before or after the meeting as well. Uh, starting next year, we're gonna move it to the third Wednesday, the regular meetings.
Okay, I think you covered the summary of action items as well.
Yeah.
Are, is there anything else under that?
Nope, there's nothing additional that we need to do, um, before the next ZDA meeting. Well, I'll, uh, we'll be getting packets out here this week for you. Yeah, that is true, yeah. Yep, we'll do that at the, we can either do that, well, we can do that on the next agenda. Either that or I was gonna say December, but we may not have a December meeting, so, um, we'll change the bylaws to, so, to say the regular meeting. So we'll be back together next Wednesday very quickly. Nope, the cases are posted on the website, um, on the township website. There's just their applications and site plans that you can take a look at. Um, what you're missing is like agenda minutes and then a staff report related to those applications. So if you want to get a copy of those applications, you know, Jackie, you could stop by the office tomorrow and Jackie could print that out for you so you could take a look at them before the packet comes out if you want to. Otherwise, if you have time later in the week or over the weekend, take a look at those sites. You can touch base with Jackie, I should be able to help you out with that. And the esport sign is actually an, an appeal of my decision, so, um, it's not a variance request. It's more of a broad, general.
You said it's on the website right now?
Yes. Yeah. That's it. Yeah, at the bottom on the first page. Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of information right there, so, all the way to the bottom, you're a Z, you're zoning board of appeals. So you go right to the bottom of the page.
Any other questions? Any, uh, public comments or concerns? In that case, um, I'd like, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Meeting adjourned at, I think it's 6:33, I can't read that, six...
Uh, there's a nice glare on it, I know, I, yeah.
At what time? 6:33.